I'd like to call on me to order. Betsy, would you please call the roll?
I note that all board members are in attendance this evening.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve our agenda this evening.
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Betsy?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Action items from closed session. We have one item this evening, student discipline. The Board of Education reviewed the hearing officers' report regarding a suspension hearing of Student A, GMS student. Based on the evidence and records submitted at the suspension hearing which clearly substantiate violation of the existing rules of the Student Discipline Code and guidelines, the administrative action was consistent and with the Discipline Code and therefore the suspension of Student A will be upheld. Any vote or anything?
Yes.
Okay, Betsy? Oh, I need a motion to... Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Betsy?
Carter?
Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Personal action items. 6.1, honorable dismissal of certified personnel reduction in force.
Okay. These are in response to the budget reductions that were acted upon on March 31st by the Board and there's a resolution and I'll have President Peter Meyer read just the beginning part.
Whereas the Board has received reports and recommendations from the Superintendent regarding the number of teachers needed to be employed for the 2015-2016 school term, and whereas the Board is determined to decrease the number of teachers employed by the Board and discontinue some teaching services due to economic necessity caused by unpredictable and declining revenues from the state, and whereas the Board is required to notify teachers of honorable dismissal at least 45 days prior to the end of the current school term. Now therefore be it resolved that, one, the teacher set forth on the attached Exhibit A shall be honorably dismissed effective at the close of the 2014-2015 school term. Two, the Superintendent is authorized and directed to mail notice of honorable dismissal to each teacher on Exhibit A and to cause a copy of such notice to be personally delivered to each teacher. If personal service cannot be made, the notice shall be sent by certified mail, return receipt requested. And three, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, such written notice is in accordance with ILICS 5/24-12.
At the bottom of the resolution or the list of names, I'll just... For that resolution, so you want to do that. You don't have to do their positions.
All right. The names included are Hillary Morris, Lindsay Baggett, Lucy...
Lucas Troyer.
Lucas Troyer, Caroline Bartko, Stacy Hilst, Lindsay Markham, Stephanie...
Karina.
Karina, Amy Julian, Katrina Craven, Sarah Callahan, Ashley Byalis, Michelle Cunningham, Megan Taylor, Amy Ross, Michelle Erickson, Laura Brask, Terry Doyle, and Caleb Cox. So with that, I need a motion to...
Yes.
To adopt the personal consent or the dismissal of the listed personnel. Thank you, Jim. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Betsy?
Could we have discussion first?
Sure. This is indeed a sad thing that we have to do here as the Board and the Administration
to have to release teachers because of lack of funding. Not releasing teachers because of their teaching ability, their duties, but we have to release them because of the budget, which is over a million dollars in the hole and the state is not helping us out. It is indeed difficult to do. None of us like to do that because we know we are impacting each one of those teachers and impacting their families. I'd like to say good luck to all of the people who are on that list in finding another job. We'll do our best to help you find that job.
Thank you, Linda. We met with...Teresa and I met with each of the individuals and explained their insurance coverage and their payout of their contracts for this year and explained the recall process as well as the RIF process so that they understood. We echo that it's very difficult to sit in front of someone who has done a nice job for the district and we explained to them that it would be made very clear that this is in response solely to budget reduction, solely to the fact that the state funding isn't where it needs to be and that we have to make decisions in the spring not knowing where our budget will be in the fall. So it's difficult for us to have to do that as administrators, but knowing that we have to make those tough decisions now because we don't yet know what will come from state funding levels and from perhaps something like the Senate Bill 1 or pension shift, what the impact to Val Chatham might be, we have to make those decisions now. So we explained that to each of them and we expressed to them that we would make sure that it's very clear publicly that this has nothing to do with any of their performance or any of their job completion of their duties. It's solely about budget reduction, so.
And we also, as the Board and Administration, are looking for many, many ways to be able to save money. Unfortunately, the personnel costs are the largest percentage of our budget and therefore take the biggest hit, but we are looking constantly at other ways in which we can save money.
Can I just add one thing to what Carrie said during our meetings? I want to compliment the Principals because they sat in on those meetings with us and the support that they offered during those meetings and following those meetings...
Absolutely.
...during the semester to help those teachers transition or to provide the support that they need for the remainder of the semester. So I just wanted to compliment all of them during the meetings.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I apologize, I was unable to be at the last meeting because I was visiting with my daughter out of state and if I had been able to be there, I understand we are in a financial... bad financial situation right now, but I would have voted no. I just don't believe that by cutting teachers and the services that we're best serving our kids. I don't know what the answer is. I just...I don't know. As I sit here, I just keep hoping, as my husband says, "Hope is not a method."
Hope is not a strength.
But I just feel that there's got to be a better way.
Any other discussion?
We could have an incredibly successful fundraiser.
Sure.
I'm saying that seriously. Not this year, but I mean, everybody else has raised money, we can do it too, but unfortunately not to address this.
We could have an incredibly successful fundraiser.
Sure.
I'm saying that seriously. Not this year, but I mean, everybody else has raised money, we can do it too, but unfortunately not to address this.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second. Betsy?
Yes. Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
No.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Item 6.2, honorable dismissal of ESP personnel reduction in force. Whereas the Board has received reports and recommendations from the Superintendent regarding the number of educational support staff needed to be employed for the 2015-2016 school term, and whereas the Board is determined to decrease the number of ESP staff employed by the Board and discontinue some services due to economic necessity caused by unpredictable and declining revenues from the state, and whereas the Board is required to notify ESP staff to honorable dismissal at least 30 days prior to the end of the school term, the current school term. Now therefore be resolved that Michelle Randall shall be dismissed effective at the closure of her current assignment, which is June 30th, 2015. The Superintendent is authorized and directed to mail notice of honorable dismissal to Michelle Randall and cause a copy of such notice to be personally delivered to each her. If personal service cannot be made, the notice shall be sent by certified mail, return receipt requested. And three, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, such written notices in accordance with IL...with 105, ILCS 5/10.23-5 of the School Code. Any discussion?
Will she be maintaining the same number of hours that she currently works?
No. She would be, based on seniority, she would be allowed to have a bus driving position, so it's a different position.
Which she had before. She drove a bus before this position.
Right. This is one that we don't have to take this action tonight. Like the certified teachers, we have to take action in April. We don't have to necessarily about support staff. However, we feel like it's important to, if we know that a decision, for example, was voted on on March 31st, we feel like it's important to allow, you know, the employees as much time as we possibly can give them so that they understand, you know, and they can make arrangements, but that was the reason that we went ahead and brought it forward today rather than waiting.
So no more discussion. Looking for a motion to approve the honorable dismissal of ESP personnel reduction in force as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Jim. Betsy?
Yes. Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
No.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
6.3, voluntary reduction of time. Brittany Cruz, speech pathologist, has volunteered a reduction in time for the 2015-2016 school year. She will move from .8 full-time employee to .5 full-time employee for the 2015-16 school year.
Was this a position that she volunteered to do or was this part of the...
This was part of the budget reductions, but she had volunteered to. Jen, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. It's part of that reduction based on student need and you have the ability to decrease some of the services that we offer and she had expressed, actually earlier this year, an intent to reduce her time and so we went ahead and honored that request given that it matched the student's.
And this is speech pathologist, so we are obligated if the need is there to provide those services no matter what?
Correct.
Should it increase?
Should the need...
But at this time, our projection is that we have to appropriate staffing with her reducing to .5. I can't control the moves in, but at this time, that's why.
So this would not be a reduction in service, it would be a reduction in hours because of the lessened need for those services. So we're still covered. All right. Any further discussion? So with that, I will need a motion to approve the voluntary reduction of time as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Linda. Betsy?
Yes. Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Yes. 6.4, involuntary transfers based on certified eliminated positions due to budget reductions for the 2015-2016 school year. Just that?
Yeah.
Okay. Due to the economic necessity caused by unpredictable and declining revenues from the state of Illinois, the 2015-2016 budget reductions were approved at the March 30th, 2015 special board meeting. The following involuntary transfers for certified personnel are a result of the budget reductions.
And then there's an attached list. Betsy, you got it up there.
Any discussion on the involuntary transfers?
I have a particularly hard time with this one. Those positions are invaluable in our district. They help our district become...continue to be what our community expects out of our district and it just breaks my heart. I think about the work that Nada did with us for my son and...
Carrie, would you address how the college placement is going to be handled now?
Yeah, we agree that with Mrs. Weitzel that these are very difficult to approach and we talked about that at the 30th board meeting too, how difficult this is because we do value very much professional learning in our school district and instructional coaches are going above and beyond to make sure that teachers have the very best of what's needed in the classrooms and the, for example, the college placement counselor is something that we've always been very proud of and we think is a great service. What we've looked at is that the college placement counselor with a reduction of that position, that then we would ask that the four counselors, they each have one grade level and that the four counselors support that for students as was done before we had the college placement counselor position. You know, so these are definitely not something that we want to do, but again, we're trying to keep the reductions as far away from the classroom and the individual students as possible and trying not to eliminate programs as much as possible. Same thing with our librarians. Our librarians have gone above and beyond and our interventionists at the high school, they've really done such a nice job and it's very difficult for us to see those positions eliminated, but we also have struggled to see, look forward and see the deficit that we're possibly facing. So these were tough decisions that we spent a great deal of time looking at, talking about, you know, working through the issues and this is the best solution that we can find.
I have two questions, comments. We still have one librarian in the district as required.
Two.
Okay.
We'll actually have...
We have to have at least one, but we have two.
Right.
Okay, as required.
Right.
And the GHS interventionist coordinator, how is that going to look now?
Jim, do you want to speak to that?
I don't know what it's fully going to look like right now. The primary...there are a number of different responsibilities that we're going to need to deal with, the primary being the services to our ELL kids, which she took care of. So it's something that we'll work with Pam and she'll help us understand how we can do those things. The time we have in the mornings is very valuable and how she operates with teams to help those kids. So whether we can maintain those without...the leadership's going to shift a little bit and some of that's going to go to the Administration, I'd say mostly between myself and Brian, but I can't tell you exactly what it's going to look like right now.
So she primarily worked with English language learners?
Yes, and she had all the RTI stuff and all the interventions and drove the interventions for those kids with the RTI teams that she worked with.
And what about freshmen advantage?
It's nearly nonexistent.
Oh.
We're going to piece together something, but...
The summer program? Freshmen advantage?
Yeah, it's not so much a summer program anymore.
It was during final exam.
Right, we tried it during finals.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah.
We're going to try to do something in the final week of school.
For the kids that are coming in? Oh, I would urge you to continue that because I've heard good things about how it helps the kids. Yeah. It's on somebody else's plate.
It's another unfortunate loss because it was a good program.
Yes.
Pam put a lot of work into it.
Yes, she did.
Just, it makes...I think the other problem with all of this is it makes me worry that we're going to have parents who choose not to move into our district if we can't fix this.
The only thing is, it's all over. There's 350 lots that are on Caldwell Manor. I bet they sell.
We still offer an outstanding program. I mean, we have, you know, top-notch teachers, top-notch administrators. It's still a very desirable school district to go to because we continue to do great things for kids, extracurricular and curricular. It's...we're trying to keep it as far away from possible to our student experience and that's becoming difficult to do, so we will have to talk about revenue streams, we will have to talk about, you know, what the next steps are, but we're trying to keep these reductions as far away from possible as...from students as possible.
I'd like to say one thing too, that, you know, this has happened in the past and we've said the exact same things that we're saying now about affecting students, but with the caliber of teachers and administrators that we have in this district, we've always found a way to not let it affect the kids and that's what I think is unique about our district is it does not affect the kids and we try and do our best to make sure that they get what they need, no matter what.
And I agree with that. I just think that these positions support our teachers and help them maintain that caliber.
They do. They do. I don't think anybody would disagree.
Nobody can argue that point. It's a matter of, unfortunately, dollars and cents and it...and this time it's worse than the last time it was because the last time it was...the target was there, we hit the target and then it kind of moved a little bit, we got more money in the net, but if anything, we're going to be getting less money in than what we thought we were going to. They're cutting us even more than we thought they were, so.
When I see Governor Roner on Wednesday, he's going to hear from...
We'll give him a piece of mind, will you?
Yeah.
Don't let him get away.
That's what we have to do, is talk to our legislators.
Yeah, luckily he will.
The only thing I would like to say is Carrie has kept the Board informed about the hours and hours of discussion by the Administration, looking at all, you know, possible variations. So, I mean, I know that this, these sets, these recommendations are very difficult for them as well, but I also know that they have been formulated with a great deal of care and this is the best solution that they have arrived at, so we respect that even though it's very painful.
Thank you, Susan. They really have done an outstanding job rolling up their sleeves and I appreciate that you point that out because they're very protective of their buildings and rightfully so. You know, they really care so much about what happens in their buildings, the staff that they have, they're very protective because those are important. They see the work that's happening every day and for them to jump in and roll up their sleeves and say, "I'll help balance the budget." You know, "We'll help figure out what we can do," it's phenomenal and we have leaders who are willing to do that even though they'd very much rather argue with us and say, "No, we need every one of these people," and they do. They've done an outstanding job. When you look at what our instructional coaches have done and our interventionists and, you know, all of those positions, the Principals very much value each and every one of those positions, but they're willing to roll up their sleeves and say, "Okay, let's talk about this and let's get into it and figure out what we can do to balance the budget," because they know that the legacy of the district depends on us balancing a budget, especially in tight times like this. The legacy, the future of this district depends on our ability to cut where we can and try to tighten the belt as much as possible right now while we can. So this is...it's a very difficult time in our school district, it's a very difficult time for all of us, as well as even more so for, you know, obviously for our teachers who are impacted and don't have positions next year. It's very, very difficult for them, but it's, unfortunately, it's a necessity for us.
Forced on us by expenses that are exceeding revenues. So this is what we have to do.
And it's more the revenue than the expense, that's the problem.
Right. And continues to be unknown. You know, that's one of the things that we've talked a lot about, Vision 2020, and one of the things that is so important in Vision 2020 is the concept of asking our legislators for a two-year budget. If we can look at a two-year budget cycle and we can know ahead of time what exactly we can expect, we as educators can do the right thing at the moment that we need to because right now we're cutting not knowing what's going to happen. So we may be reducing a position and letting a teacher go to another school district that we don't, we maybe didn't need to reduce because something will change when it comes to, you know, the legislators in passing the budget. So it's very difficult right now. We have to, because of timelines and the statute, we have to give these notices now, but we don't know yet what our budget will look like. So we're obviously hoping for the best, but if we had a two-year cycle, a budget cycle as school districts, we could know ahead of time much better and predict the future much better than we can today and that's a struggle for us.
And I would like to add that we don't know the budget, not because of Nate's...
Oh, absolutely.
...abilities.
Absolutely.
He is very talented, very qualified CSBO. We don't know our budget because we don't know if the state make...the state has, in this past 12 months, has really caught, meant all the districts in the state of Illinois off guard by just unilaterally determining that the categorical that we counted on will not be paid, so.
That's a good...
I did want to...
Yeah, I'm glad you did.
I did want to make that.
I'm glad you did. Yeah, it's...absolutely.
So with that, we were on 6.4. Any further discussion? So we need a motion to approve the involuntary transfers based on certificated eliminated positions due to budget reductions for the 2015-2016 school year as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Brandon. A second.
Yes, second.
Thank you, Jim. Betsy?
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
No.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
6.5, involuntary transfers based on ESP eliminated positions due to budget reductions for the 2015-2016 school year. Due to the economic necessity caused by unpredictable and declining revenues from the state of Illinois, the 2015-2016 budget reductions were approved at the March 30th, 2015 special board meeting. The following involuntary transfers for ESP personnel are a result of budget reductions. You need to read these.
There...yeah, that's all right.
And there's two?
Yeah.
Kristen Stokes and Bree Cody.
These are two...another reduction that we made was the two secretarial positions and so the reassignment, one is actually, you'll see that we had, as you recall, had a resignation from Chatham Elementary. One is a transfer to that position and it's effective after board approval and it would be effective after board approval. And then the other position, or the other transfer is in regards to, because of the reduction of the position that you just reduced, then that, based on seniority, that transfer would happen to a half-time position. She would be offered from a full-time position to a half-time position in the district based on seniority.
Our secretaries work very, very hard and the years they spend volunteering in the district and you just, you know what they do and it's just, I know how much time they spend. Even our secretaries spend so much time talking to our kids and helping our kids, you don't even think about it, how much comfort they give to our students every day. It's just going to be one more thing that our kids lose.
None of these are easy.
Yeah. That's why they're cuts and unfortunately necessary and it's the responsible way to handle the finances of the district, to live within the financial resources that we are provided, so.
The only plus side to this is the fact that we get to keep those three employees that are affected. Fortunately, we get to keep them in our organization. One will become a driver, one will unfortunately be reduced half-time, but, and then another is just relocating to another building. So the good news is that, you know, we get to keep them in our organization should they choose to accept those positions, but...
So further evidence of the hard work that the Administration has done to do what we can to think differently, to reallocate resources whenever possible and to minimize the impact on the classroom and on our professionals in the district.
Thank you.
Further discussion? If not, we'll need a motion to approve the involuntary transfers based on ESP eliminated positions due to budget reductions for the 2015-2016 school year as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Jim. Betsy?
Carter?
Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Weitzel?
No.
Worley?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
6.6, honorable release of 2014-2015 mentors. Recommended action?
It's not coming. That's the...
Oh, still the other one.
It's frozen on the other one. That's the, it's frozen on the other one. Betsy, do you want to pull the agenda item? Oh, I'm sorry, here it is. Okay. My computer was slow. Okay.
Okay, two, the recommended actions to honorably release the 2014-2015 mentors at the end of the present school term as presented.
And these are hired on a one-year basis anyway because we don't know yet who may need a mentor for the following year. So, this is something that happens on an annual basis.
Any further discussion? Without any motion for the honorable release of the 2014-2015 mentors as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Betsy?
Cobb?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitesell?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Again, thank you to the administration for this, for their work in this extremely difficult task. New business, seven dot one, approval of memorandum of understanding, and, and this is to allow time for the...
Right.
...affected professional staff to seek other positions.
Right. A couple of years ago, when we made reductions, the, the association came to us and asked for some understanding of the fact that some of our teachers, our new teachers would, or the teachers that were being reduced, would need some time to interview in other districts. And they asked for some flexibility, and we said that that, as employers, we thought that that was something that we could offer, flexibility in their time, knowing that, you know, they're new to the district and so they don't have accumulated personal, personal time, but, you know, that they'll still need to, to go and interview, sometimes traveling maybe, and, and having, you know, needing to leave school in order to do so. What we changed and included this time was that they would have to exhaust their personal time before, their own personal time that's on, on record, before they would take this, this time. But again, it's limited. They have to communicate with their administrators so that they understand, you know, what, what the purpose is. But it just was something that we thought was a, a kind way to approach this situation, knowing that they would unfortunately have to be interviewing in other districts. We would much rather that they stay in the district, but this would give them some, a little bit of peace of mind, knowing that they have a little bit of flexibility from their current employer to do so.
And Carrie, I can't read that right now, it's too small, but also it says that they have to prove that they were at an interview.
Right. So, it can't just be taking the afternoon off. It has to be for an interview. So, they have to give us that. We appreciate the, the BCA coming forward and saying, "This is something we think would harshen, or lessen the har, how harsh this, this is for them," to lessen that, that anxiety and fear that they may have going into this. So, just giving some flexibility to them and, and allowing them a little bit of, of time in order to, to interview.
Any further, further discussion? So, without any motion to approve the memorandum of understanding as presented?
Move.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Brandon. Betsy?
Yes. Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes.
Whitesell?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes. Future board meeting dates, eight dot one. So, we have tomorrow night for negotiations at 5:30. 21st, negotiations at 5:30. And then, April 27th is our regular board meeting. Closed session, 5:15, 6:30, regular meeting, and also slated, pending certification would be seating of the new board members at that particular time.
Don't we also have a one on the 23rd? Oh, tentative.
Oh, that was tentative, wasn't it?
Yeah. But that will probably be confirmed maybe and discussed tomorrow night.
Will discuss tomorrow night.
With the full team.
We can discuss that.
Moving to eight, two, opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any topic. Would anyone like to address the school board this evening?
I would.
Hi.
I'm Carrie Shelby, and I was here last time.
Yes.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about class size. I know we've reduced some teacher staff, and I've heard from a lot of teachers in elementary schools that they're going to be seeing, and you talked about raising the cap, just more students in the classrooms. I just wondered if we were going to be changing any kind of discipline policies in the classroom. In reading my textbook, there was a lot of talk about one of the biggest problems with teachers, why they tend to leave teaching so soon, is because of discipline problems in the classroom. And I know I've been in classrooms where we have, you know, a lot of diverse needs